Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, January 13th, meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. And will everyone please rise for the pledge of the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luisci.
Present.
Trustee Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
And I am here tonight. We have no public hearings tonight. It's going to bring us right to the adoption of minutes. So the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of December 9th, 2013. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences?
No, we do not.
Nothing at all? I have one appointment to make this month. It's the appointment of Janice Barandis as ad hoc member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term, one year, to expire January 12th, 2015. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And we have no special presentations on our agenda, but I'm going to make an exception here because we have Tukahoe's own Luigi Marcocchia. He's our town councilman in the town of Eastchester. And I'm going to ask him if he would come on up and I think he wants to speak a little bit about some of the business that's been going on up in the town.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. Every year, I come here around budget time and we adopted the Eastchester Town Budget at the end of December, and it's effective now. So I just wanted to come here and just talk a little bit about the budget and where we are and what that means for the residents of Tukahoe. Again, thank you for having me and hello to all the trustees. The town of Eastchester 2014 budget levy increase is within the allowable tax cap. It was actually at 1.66 percent, which is below the 2% tax cap. The town board has been fiscally conservative with the town's finances. It has been the judgment of our supervisor, Tony Colavita, and the town board to create a budget with the most services at the lowest cost to the residents. The 2014 budget requires some very difficult decisions in order to balance the budget, which includes a significant drop in non-property revenues and also an increase in costs such as healthcare, which is expected to go up 4% to 5% this year. Also, the 2014 budget reflects a pay increase for all of our workers. We are very pleased to be able to provide this small increase. Many of them have gone year after year after year with no increase. It's been that dire the budget and that tight. So we're very pleased this year that we were able to give an increase to all of our employees across the board. There's also a restriction on purchases of material and supplies. This directive has been in place since the fall of 2008 and will continue through the foreseeable future. And we continue to reduce staff, reorganize departments, to combine positions to keep costs down, and that's been very effective, you know, for us. The total town budget for 2014 is $34,000, $38,804, which represents a $96,276 increase over the 2013 budget. What this means for the village of Tukahoe is anyone with an assessment of $7,300 will pay an additional $2.93 per year. So that's 24 cents per month. So it's, we've kept, as you can tell by these numbers, I mean, the increase is almost 0%. We did the same thing last year and relatively same number the year before. So the last three years, I think Tukahoe's done very, very well. The town board was able to keep tax rates low despite the fact that revenues are flat and costs have risen. For example, as I already mentioned, the healthcare premiums have increased 4% to 5% in 2014, but the most significant obligation of the town, which has the greatest impact on the budget, is our pension contribution. The 2014-15 pension contribution for the town is estimated to be $2,878,000. We were able to absorb that full amount into the budget and still keep our tax rate as low as possible and below the tax cap for the third consecutive year. We will continue to look at our long-range goals to make Eastchester, Tukahoe, and Bronxville the best it can be, and we look forward to continuing our excellent relationship with the village of Tukahoe and Bronxville. As a matter of fact, Councilman Glenn Bolito is at the Village of Bronxville Board Meeting tonight, having a similar presentation and advising the village board in Bronxville and the residents of Bronxville that their taxes have also remained very low. Tukahoe is a great place, and together we can make it better. For example, we worked closely in removing the fire damaged ECDC building at the Parkway Oval, which created a beautiful open green space, which everyone can enjoy. Speaking of Parkway Oval, the town has privatized the maintenance of the grass cutting at that field. That was in the prior year's budget, which has resulted in reduced costs to the town. This is one of the many steps we have taken to keep the tax rate low. Finally, I want to encourage our senior residents of Tukahoe to take advantage of the vast senior services offered by the town. These services are for all town residents, and it's amazing how many options are available. Programs include medical and shopping transportation, case management, long-term care planning, light housekeeping, home-delivered meals, small home repairs, Medicare, and entitlement counseling, as well as bed and bath programs. Please feel free to call 914-771-3340 if you have any questions or any interest in those particular programs. I just want to thank you for your time, and I want to wish you all a happy new year, a healthy new year, and to all the residents as well.
Well, thank you very much, Luigi.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming down. We appreciate it, as you do every year, and you do a wonderful job up there. You know, we miss you here, I can say that much. I guess we'll also look forward to another meeting here on the village, a town board meeting in the village?
Absolutely. And we'll work with you on setting a date, and I think that's been very productive.
It has.
We have a town board meeting here in the village, and we have one in Bronxville once a year. And once again this year, we'll do that. We'll coordinate through you to pick the best date. And I also want to thank you for all your help with the community center. I know that the seniors are coming down there, and there's a lot that needs to be done, some work that needs to be done, and it's all hands on deck. Anything that, obviously, we can do. I know that the village has been very cooperative, and our seniors are going to be relocating there temporarily while the Lake Isle catering facility is being renovated. So, just a little bit on Lake Isle. There's an RFP that's out, and we're in the selection process now of bringing a new caterer in. The caterer that we had for the past 25-plus years is leaving. He had enough. There's nothing we can do to convince him to stay, and it was time to bring in a new caterer. So we're going through that process now. So hopefully, within the next couple of months, we'll have a new caterer there, and in the catering facility, we'll see some improvements. In addition, we have a beautiful golf course. We've also privatized the maintenance of that golf course. The conditions are absolutely beautiful from what I hear and from the golfers are telling us. And we also have a brand-new $6 million tennis facility there, and there's actually bubbles around each of the eight courts, so you can play year-round tennis and winter tennis. And that's going phenomenally well. So anyone that's interested in playing some tennis, please feel free to sign up, and we have a lot to offer at Lake Isle.
And possibly some indoor swimming, I hear, maybe down the road too, right?
Down the road?
Yes.
We're looking to do that?
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
But I think, once we nail down this catering, we'll free up some time to really focus on getting this pool covered and one of the pools covered. But yes, that's definitely in the plans.
It's a first-class facility, and I know that the nutrition program has been used to operating out of a first-class facility. So we're going to do our best to make sure that they're comfortable for the time that they're going to be at the community center. We have a new recreation supervisor who also takes control of the community center, and I know he's going to do everything possible to make sure they're comfortable there.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I look forward to working with all you.
Thanks, Lou. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you, Luigi.
That's going to bring us to our first opportunity to address the board on agenda items. If anybody has anything they'd like to talk about that's on our agenda, and if not, I'm going to swiftly move right to our resolutions. We have resolution number one. Is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and enter into a license agreement with the Westchester-Putnam Council, Boy Scouts of America, Troop 353, Eastchester, for a three-year term for use of the community center every Sunday from 4:30 to 8:30, plus the use of a storage room for camping gear and other related Boy Scout materials. Insurance shall be provided by the Westchester-Putnam Council, Boy Scouts of America, Troop 353, Eastchester, in accordance with the terms of the license agreement. Copy of the license agreement is available at the clerk's office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
The Boy Scouts have been in the community center for, I believe, 20, about 20 years now, it's my understanding. And what we're doing here is we're actually memorializing their use of the center. We're going to be doing that with other entities who do use the center, so this is one of many steps that we'll be taking throughout this year.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the advertising for public bids in connection with the Village of Tukahoe Community Center Roofing Project 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I can say for sure that I can't wait till we don't have to have garbage cans out collecting water in that building.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and enter into a proposal agreement with Russell Watzke Incorporated Roofing Consultant for roofing consultant services in connection with bid proposals for the Community Center Roofing Project 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is a resolution scheduling a public hearing on a resolution in support of Chapter 433 of the Laws of New York 2013, authorizing the Public Service Commission upon application by the Village of Tukahoe to order costs for infrastructure maintenance and access to be charged to all customer classes located in such municipality. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll talk a little bit about what this is. The governor signed off on some legislation late last year. This pertains to a invoice that the village gets every year, and this year, it's my understanding from our treasurer, that it's going to be $160,000. And he's nodding his head. We pay $160,000 for what's determined, or what's deemed as fire hydrant rental fees. And what we, if this will pass, we're going to have a public hearing on this, what it'll end up doing is that instead of the village putting in our taxes, $160,000, which that cost is carried over onto all the property tax bills of all our residents, United Water's going to go ahead and invoice all of their customers that directly. So this will not have a negative impact on the average homeowner, will probably slightly decrease their bill a little bit, because United Water sends invoices out for water service, and then they would be sending it out for rental fees for everyone who uses water in their district. But what we're doing here is we're scheduling a public hearing.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number five is designating Tuesday, March 18th, 2014, as Election Day in the Village of Tukahoe. The polls will be open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 9:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is designating locations of polling places as follows. The 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 32nd, and 33rd districts will be located in the Tukahoe Community Center. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven is appointing Matthew Perillo as custodian technician of voting machines for the March 18th village elections. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eight is appointing inspectors to serve on Election Day, March 18th, in the seven polling places. The name of inspectors will be provided by the Democratic and Republican chair persons. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine is accepting a contribution of $12,100 from the General Russo-Pulp Foundation to fund costs associated with the Winter Fest and the Crestwood Holiday Fest and the New Year's Eve events. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very, very much, again, to the General Russo-Pulp Foundation. If it wasn't for them, I dare say that we would be able to afford some of these great events, so thank you very much.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 10 is approving payment of vouchers in the amount of $2,061,215, consisting of abstract number 27, for $182,215; abstract 28, for $443,048; abstract 29, for $3,404; number 30, for $1,322,875; and number 31, for $109,671. The three largest invoices paid were $834,201 for the village's PFRS pension contribution for fiscal year 2013-14; $442,722 for the village's ERS pension contribution for fiscal year 2013-2014; and $170,476 for construction work on the Crestwood Streetscape Utility Underground Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 11 is approving and ratifying the hiring of Claire and Gertsen Esquires for review of a certain lease for office space right here at Village Hall. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 12 is authorizing the mayor to execute and enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Eastchester for the use of the town, for use by the town of Eastchester, Eastchester Senior Nutrition Center, of the Tukahoe Community Center, from 7:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, for a period of approximately eight months, commencing February 1, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 13 is accepting the low bid for replacement garage door and opener at the DPW facility in the amount of $5,728 from Westchester Doors Incorporated in Portchester, New York. There were three bids ranging from $5728 to the highest of $8,250. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 14 is a resolution scheduling a public hearing on proposed Local Law 1 of 2014, authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, Section 3-C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And this is on our agenda, as we do every year, because we need to protect ourselves in case we have to exceed the tax levy. We have never exceeded the tax levy, the mandated tax levy, and we have no intentions of doing that this year, but just as a little extra level of measure of safety, we do pass this resolution each year.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 15 is a resolution concerning the action of House v. Eklund et al., Case Number 13, CV 6871, United States District Court for the Southern District of New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luisci.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's going to swiftly bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and as always, we will start with our very competent and able Chief of Police, John Costanzo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Just a bit of good news. We had received a grant from the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee last year to equip two of our vehicles with in-car computers so that we could electronically write tickets as well as fill out accident reports that would automatically be electronically sent up to Albany. The final installations were completed several weeks ago. The state came down early last week and installed their software, and two of the vehicles are up and running. The better news is, we also received word recently that we received funding to equip the rest of our fleet with these in-car computers. So hopefully, in the next several months, the hardware will be installed, the software will be installed, and since everyone's already been trained, we'll move forward in having the whole fleet equipped with these in-car computers and fully funded by the state.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Chief, is that the dish that's on top of the roof of the interceptor I saw today? Is that what? It looks like a di, well, it's not a dish, but it looks like another, there's something on the roof of the vehicle?
Yeah, one of the vehicles has the license plate reader. I don't believe there's anything special related to this track system, but one of the vehicles does have license plate reader cameras on it, and that might be what you were looking at.
I saw something on the roof of the black interceptor, unless I was...
The light bar is very low-profile, and that might be...
Is that what, okay. Might have been the...
Any questions?
Might have been the sun.
Cars look great, chief.
Okay.
And I notice every other municipality is now going a black, black car, so we're a trendsetter here.
Black is the new, orange is the new.
Yeah, that's right. Frank DiMarco, from Department of Public Works.
And Mayor, board members. I just want to announce that DPW is losing a great asset to its department, and that asset is Al Hagan. Al Hagan will be retiring after 30 years of service with the Department of Public Works. Al has been a sanitation driver, and he's also operated heavy machinery over the years. But Al, you know, Al brought old-time work ethics to the department, which is sometimes lost in the workforce today, and we truly need. For 30 years of service, he was born and raised in Tukahoe. Al will be retiring to Concord, North Carolina, with his lovely wife, Leslie, son, Al Jr., and his daughter, Nina, with two grandchildren. I'd like to wish Al and his wife many years of health and happiness. I also want to mention that Eastchester's head of parks, Joe Luciano, will be retiring. After 35 years of service, as a friend and as an associate, Joe Luciano is a gentleman through and through. I'd like to wish Joe and his wife, Barbara, many years of health and happiness in their retirement endeavors. Other than that, I just want to say that DPW will be closed for the holidays. Let me see here. Monday, January 20th, an observance of Martin Luther King holiday, and February 12th, an observance of Lincoln's birthday. I just want to also mention to everybody that our new calendar, recycling and sanitation calendar, is online, and that we will be handing them out soon, also.
Great.
Okay.
An update on our sweeper, Frank? We have a...
Oh, new sweeper, yeah. Great sweeper. It's much smaller than the, than our old sweeper that we had. It was more cost-effective for us. It does a fantastic job, really does.
And how about potholes, too? I mean, we see that on TV every single day.
Yeah, you know, the secret with potholes is really trying to get to them when the condition's dry. I know we've had a lot of rain, so obviously, when we do hit them during the rains, we did hit them last week, but it was obviously wet last week with all the rain we had. A true condition to repair a pothole is a dry condition, so tomorrow's going to be our day. We're going to start doing them tomorrow. It'll take us about two days, really, to get through the village, so everybody, please bear with us. We're not as bad as a lot of other municipalities, but so far, we haven't had any tire repairs, so we're good.
And there's been some bad ones down in the city.
And there's been quite a bit of damage everywhere, yeah.
Now, do you rely on our guys traveling around, we're so small, traveling around and identifying them, or do you rely on residents leaving, calling up?
We do take both. We have had residents that have called in and really pinpointed certain potholes that were under cars or over to the side, under parked cars, that is, but we do ask for their assistance. It makes our job a lot easier if we're in the area. We do target all the potholes we could possibly get to.
I want to echo your comments about Al. You know, he's, uh, he's been the sanitation driver on my side of the village. I've known him for many, many years, and, you know, being involved here with the Village of Tocco for the last ten years myself, there's been many a storm where I've been down at the yard, and you know what? That guy actually has slept there. He's made sure that he's on call, you know, he's, he's been right in the building. He is, he has a work ethic like no other, other than yourself, present company excluded, but I mean, he...
I was going to throw that in, but no, I figured not.
We're really going to miss him, and I'm certainly going to miss him. He is a, a very dynamic personality, and I certainly hope he comes and visits us once in a while.
Great guy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Bill Williams, our Building Inspector.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Mayor, I just wanted to bring on everyone up to speed that we've been in a couple of meetings the last couple of weeks with the developer and the contractors from Main Street. So I would say, within the next couple of weeks, we'll see some significant movement up on that end of the village.
They pulled a tank out of the, I know I spoke to the developer this morning and then last week.
Yeah, they pulled it out about two weeks ago.
He said they pulled out a, a tank, and he, he had mentioned that it was a propane tank, so there's really no environmental issue with that?
Right, that's correct.
You agree with that? Okay. And I noticed he put a new fence up around the property, so...
Yes.
Yeah, it seems to me, I get the sense that he's getting ready.
I think, within the next couple of weeks, we should have everything ironed out.
Mm-hmm.
Bill, just the other two projects going on, the Old Salerno's property and the one over in Crestwood, I get a lot of questions, what's going on?
Old Salerno's is still before the planning board. He hasn't come back, and I believe the Crestwood is still tied up in litigation.
Among the parties, the investors, it has nothing to do with the village, right?
Yes, no, nothing with the village.
Thank you, Bill. Our Treasurer, John Pintos.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Would you like me to further dwell on the fire hydrant law?
Sure, please.
Okay, uh, as now, the bill was introduced by Congresswoman Amy Paulin and signed by Governor Cuomo into law in October. As it stands now, as you said, fire hard hydrant infrastructure maintenance is billed to the village, of which we pay and pass that expense on to the taxpayers of the village. What this law will do is take those charges for the maintenance of the infrastructure of the fire hydrants and assess them to each individual user, which means that entities, taxes, and entities that don't pay that charge will start paying it. It's not a tax, it's a user charge, so it's only fair that anybody benefiting from the fire hydrants pays their fair share. The costs from the budget will be passed on to the taxpayers. Also, on Saturday, January eleventh, the village started the budgeting process for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, and while it was, you know, compiled a very raw data very early in the year, we could see right off the bat that we're in a much better position than last year. Some of the key indicators, levy increase went from an initial twelve percent last year down to four percent this year, and the tax rate per thousand went from an initial thirteen percent last year to seven and a half this year, and that's with some pretty conservative estimates in there. Hopefully, over the next few months, we'll compile the necessary data, ensure, you know, the mayor, the board, all department heads will be working very diligently to get a fair and equitable budget. I'll mention again, we'll be working with Dave Scialzo and the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, consulting with them, so that we can present to the taxpayers an equitable, fair budget. Any questions?
Oh, thank you. It was refreshing to have our first meeting. We started a little bit earlier this year.
Right.
But it was nice to have that first meeting and not have the enormous colossal weight of some ridiculous double-digit tax increase, you know, looming over our heads. So not to say that we're not going to squeeze, you know, a nickel out of a penny, but it was, it was nice to not have that frustration our first, first run out of the gate.
There's still a lot of hard work to do, but I don't feel that we're behind the eight ball this year. We're starting in a much better position.
Great. Thank you. And we're going to have a report tonight from our Recreation Supervisor, Mr. John Galuzzi. John's been doing a wonderful job. He's been working out of his office, which is down at the Tocco Community Center on Columbus Avenue, and I want to thank you. You really hit the ground running, and we notice it, huge, huge difference. I mean, it has a refreshed feel, refreshed look in the center, and I know you're actually down there doing a lot of painting yourself, so I want to thank you for that. And it's, maybe you want to talk to us a little bit about some of the programs and some of the things that are going on down at the community center?
Sure. Once, good evening, by the way. Happy New Year, Board and Mayor. I just wanted to say, incidentally, D P W helped out a lot with clearing out and painting, and I just wanted to thank them for their, for their help and attention to some of those issues down there, which were just minor, but we all came together on that. It's always been an honor, working alongside of everyone here on the board and everyone in the village. I've enjoyed being part of this team that brings so many nice programs and events to the wonderful residents of the Village of Tocco. I've been a happy resident here in the village since two thousand and one. I am truly proud to live and work here, helping to enrich the current programs in our parks, and now also at the Tocco Community Center. Some of the, some of the events, programs, and workshops that, that we encourage people to get involved in down there are quite, they go, they go the distance. We have the Boy Scouts there on Sundays, Troop Three Five Three. We have M O M, which stands for Mothers of Multiples. They host an annual support group, which is a community tag sale, and I'd like to give some information on that. At the community center, the tag sale will be April fifth. The hours Saturday, April fifth, will be ten a.m. to six p.m., and Sunday, the sixth, the hours on Sunday, the sixth, for that tag sale are eight a.m. to four p.m. Importantly, February first, we encourage everyone to come out who would like to give blood. The Tocco Community Center is open from ten a.m. that day to four p.m., and you can save three lives by donating some blood, and this is all from the New York Blood Center, and they'll be there Saturday, February first, so we encourage anyone who's interested to come down. It's a great cause, naturally. For more information, newyorkbloodcenter.org, and they're also on Facebook. We're still actually booking a lot of birthday parties through March, March, and I booked quite a few, about fifteen so far, and it's a great place to have a birthday party, actually, and it's cheap, eighty dollars, gets you two hours. We supply a host. We also supply a game representative who works with the kids, plays with the kids, dodgeball and basketball, whatever they need. So it's, it's, it's for, for a great cause, and it's, you know, any, anytime you have a birthday party, come on down, and I'll book it for you over at the community center. Other programs at the Tocco Community Center being offered, of course, T Y A, Tocco Youth Association, they meet weekends for winter workouts, and there are baseball teams there, Eastchester Little League. We also have a dance troupe for kids that are interested in learning how to dance. We have a choreographer down there, and they meet every Thursday at seven p.m. It's ladies' dance, and it's called Joy's Dance Troupe. The Rod and Gun Club meets there. E Y S A, Eastchester Youth Soccer Association, meets there. We also have the Hawks, if you have a special needs in sports, if you have a special needs child, and would like them involved in some well-supervised activities, then the Hawks are for you. Tuesday evenings, Tocco Community Center from eight to nine. The stage, we have a beautiful stage, and those of you who've been down to the Tocco Community Center see that there's quite, quite potential there to utilize what we have there in the stage. We're going to be doing, starting in the spring into the summer, we're going to be opening that up to entertainment, geared towards teens, of course, young adults, and they can come down, and I'll, I'll take suggestions if anybody has ideas, but we're going to look at open mic, we're going to look at some karaoke nights, we're going to look at some, um, big bands or, you know, battle of the bands, and maybe some air band contests. So if anybody has any suggestions, they can get in touch with me over at the community center, and we'll get it done.
That's great. A lot of great programs there, so thank you. Phones are working, phones are up and running, and the phone number for down there?
Phone numbers are down there.
Oh, two-two-nine, right? Two-three-one, oh-two-nine?
Right, well, I've already been there a few times, so...
Okay, that's all right. Well, thank you very much. You're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
Certainly appreciate it.
Okay.
That is going to bring us to miscellaneous business, which we have, our next village board meeting is going to be on Monday, February tenth of this year. The village offices and D P W will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, in observance of Martin Luther King's holiday, and we have a residents' community meeting Wednesday, February twelfth, at seven o'clock down at the Tocco Community Center. D P W will be closed on February twelfth, in observance of Lincoln's birthday. And that is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and tonight, we're going to start off with trustee Jeanette Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first tree committee meeting of the year will be taking place this Wednesday, January fifteenth, at Village Hall here at seven-thirty p.m., and then our first environmental committee meeting will be taking place on Wednesday, February fifth, at seven-thirty p.m. And of course, both of these meetings are always open to anyone who wants to become involved within our environmental group or get involved with our tree committee. We work closely with Frank DiMarco, and both groups have a wonderful bunch of people who just give their time and look to continue to find ways to beautify our committee, our, our village. Also, over the next month or so, I plan on working on our next edition of our village newsletter, and I hope to have it distributed by mid-February, I'm guessing. And finally, I wanted to announce to our village residents that, over the past few months, I have been thinking long and hard about my future, both professionally and personally, and have made the decision that I will not be seeking reelection from my village trustee seat this upcoming March. This was by no means an easy decision, and it is my hope that many of you believe that during the past three years, we collectively, as a board, have made many positive strides for the well-being of our village, especially during these trying economic times. On a personal note, at a fairly young age, I lost my mother a little over ten years ago, and at that time, I made three promises to her. First was to buy myself a place to live. Second was to go back to school and finish my graduate degree. And third was to volunteer in some capacity, which I decided was to give back to my community, and have had the honor of doing so as a village trustee, in addition to becoming involved with the many wonderful organizations within our village and helping out with our numerous events that take place throughout each year. My time on this board has been extremely rewarding, and I've had the opportunity to work beside so many talented individuals who I have such profound respect for, including our police chief, John Costanzo, D P W super, Frank DiMarco, Building Inspector, Bill Williams, our village clerk and deputy clerk, Susan Chimara, and Camille DeSalvo, many of which who I work closely with on a daily basis. Also, our village attorney, John Cavallaro, who has always made himself available to answer any question I may have had, and I know he's ill this evening, and I wish him well. And of course, our entire village staff of over eighty people, who truly are the ones that make our village a safe and beautiful place to live. Each of you have provided me with guidance and a priceless education. I cannot end this evening without saying a few words about the four gentlemen sitting to my right, each of which who are true gentlemen. Mayor Eklund, thank you for putting your faith in me by first appointing me three years ago to our village board, and for your unconditional guidance. I so admire your optimistic outlook and always being able to find the positive in difficult situations, and your poised approach in coming to a resolution. It is truly commendable. Tom and Steve, I so respect both of you for your patience and ability to utilize your legal expertise in reviewing an issue, topic, or concern before coming to a decision, and understanding the impact and how it will affect our village, our residents, and staff. And finally, Greg, my bookend, all the way at the other end of the dais, who balances out this board. I hope you know how much respect I have for you and your logical approach in reviewing a topic or issue, and always standing firm on your decisions, and by doing so in such a way that I believe anyone who may think differently than you do could sit back for a minute and see and understand the reasoning for your decisions. And all four of you, thank you for bringing in humor and laughter, even during the most trying situations we have had to confront together as a board. With all this being said, I have a few months left still sitting up here, and will still continue, and we have tons of work to still get through, including, of course, our next budget, and during my final days, I will continue to give my job as a village trustee one hundred percent. And above all, I am a Tocco resident, and at the moment, I don't have any plans on going anywhere, but I will continue to give back to my community, just in a different capacity. Thank you.
Well, thank you very, very much. You know, as I'm very sad to see Jeanette go, I just want to say that we've been blessed, and we're very fortunate to have her for the time that we did have her here on this board. She's been a tremendous asset to this board. The senior member, I've been on this board for ten years, and I can tell you that I knew when I appointed her that she was going to be one of the hardest-working trustees that the village has ever had, and I'm happy to say now that that prediction came true. So she's just been a tremendous asset, a great public servant, a hard worker, and knowing her style, she'll be in there working right up until March thirty-first, so can't thank you enough to that. We're going to continue on, I'll pass it on to our Deputy Mayor, Tom Giordano. He may have a brief report and some other comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Eklund. Why don't I start with the brief report first, and it's simply that this month, there remains one board meeting, and that's the, the planning board, which will be on January twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, at seven-thirty p.m. The two items are one hundred Main Street and eighty-five Yonkers Avenue. The work session has already been held on January seventh, so... Just to add to Mayor Eklund's words, I think, Jeanette, the, just, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your wonderful service to this, to this board over these past couple of years, honestly. You have been indefatigable in your work ethic. I think that the villagers have very much you to thank for the budget that we had last year and the year before. You're detail-oriented, you're willing to get your hands dirty and work harder than anyone who I've seen, other than perhaps Mayor Eklund, he works pretty darn hard, too, I have to say. I didn't realize that this was a promise kept, but you certainly did, and you certainly did give it your, it wasn't an empty promise, it was a promise where you really gave it your hundred percent, and you've earned the highest respect of mine, and I'm, I'm certain the same of my colleagues, and our residents are going to miss everything that you bring to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Quigley?
Thank you, Mayor. For the library, it should come to no surprise that our library is really at the forefront of all the technological changes that are occurring in the world of electronic everything, and a good example is just what's coming on just this month alone. Every Friday at three o'clock, you want to learn how to use your e-book, this is where we're going, so they have Download Help. They also have their own e-books and their own books to download onto that e-book. They'll be glad to help you work with that. That is going to be a special workshop on Tuesday, January twenty-first, at two p.m. Learn how to use digital downloads, not just e-books, but your iPad and other electronic devices. If you're just getting into this game, you can learn how to do emailing. We're going to have a special workshop on tomorrow, January fourteenth, at two o'clock, again, at the library. It'll explain how to walk through setting up an email account, using email addresses, things of that nature. We're getting into tax season pretty soon. A A R P will be providing a tax aid program every Friday at the library, starting on February seventh, from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty, giving advice and guidance on how to work your taxes. There'll also be some financial programs, including irrevocable trusts, learning how to use those, and that'll be on Wednesday, February twelfth, at three-thirty p.m. A more basic one called Nuts and Bolts of Financial Planning: Making Your Money Last Through Retirement. That'll be January twenty-ninth at six-thirty p.m. All these require registration, but you can always find that by going on to the library's website or calling the library, whose number, of course, I don't have at the moment, but in any event, they can find it through the, our own website. And then for the teens, there's a new Playstation Three in the teen room, that's going to get some folks there. Again, they have downloaded music in e-books, you can learn how to use those, get free music, get free use of books, just lots and lots of things going on. They also have a newsletter, that if you sign up, you'll get it on your own emails at home that details all the different activities going on, so just some great, great stuff there. One other announcement that involves, I think everybody's heard, the Town of Eastchester is celebrating its three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary this year. The official kickoff is Sunday, January twenty-sixth, at three o'clock at Concordia College. You may have heard that the Town of Eastchester, Village of Bronxville, and the Village of Tocco have encouraging people to read one book, what Community Read called Ninety-seven Orchard: An Edible History of Five Immigrant Families in One New York Tenement. The books are available, possibly at libraries, and you can go on to WomRAS to pick up the book as well. Encouraging people to read the book, and then come to the kickoff gathering on the twenty-sixth, Sunday afternoon, at three o'clock at Concordia College. Again, all that information will be available, both at our library, but if you go to the eastchester350.org website, you'll learn more about that. Onto my friend Jeanette. I'm going to embarrass her for a minute by holding up, hope everybody can see this. This is a book, it's all silver, silver lining, and she keeps extensive and thorough notes in here. She is and has been, over the past three to four years, how many years?
Three years.
Our institutional memory. If we get into discussion, say, well, what do we say about that? Give her a couple of seconds, she pages through it, and she'll tell us exactly what we said about that. Says she's made us really more careful what we say, because it's being recorded in our informal meetings, but seriously, more importantly, it makes us all individually, as trustees and mayor, better at our job, and especially collectively, as a board, making us better, because she's got the details, she pays attention to it, nothing slips by in terms of what's important city, what's important village business. And all that is just, I think, as people can see how well the village is run, I think Jeanette takes a huge amount of credit for that, because we're the ones all too making the decision. She makes sure we have the right information, she makes sure we don't let things fall by the wayside, she keeps our feet to the fire, and we are all extremely grateful, and I'm especially extremely grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you. Our trustee Luise?
Thank you, Mayor. The seniors kicked off the month of January with a food drive to benefit the Eastchester Community Action Programs Emergency Food Pantry. Anyone wishing to donate any canned goods is kindly asked to do so on their meeting dates, which occurs on every Tuesday and Thursday, weather permitting. The always, an ever-popular senior trip to the Empire Casino will take place on January twenty-third. The bus will be leaving from Father Fata Hall at the Assumption Church at ten-thirty a.m. The next big event for the seniors in the month of January will be the Westchester County Traffic Safety Office will present the program, The Older and Wiser... will present the program, The Older and Wiser Driver, which deals with how to understand changing physical abilities and how to assess driving skills. As always, they continue with these wonderful programs on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The exercise program, bingo, uh, blood pressure screening. They're also gonna be making frozen yogurt sundaes on Tuesday, January 28th. This is the month where they are soliciting, as they always do, new members. Uh, new member, the dues is only twenty dollars for the year. If you need any more information, please contact the Director, Jennifer Vetromile, at three three seven eight four eight seven. I have a special announcement here from the Superintendent of the Tocco Schools, Dr. Barbara Nunzi. This is a, concerns a pre-K program which is open to four-year-olds only. The Tocco Union School will be, begin to take, um, applications for this new program, which is going to be conducted with a qualified teacher and an assistant in each classroom. The program will run for five half-hour days, fi- I'm sorry, five half-days for two and a half hours each day, from twelve fifteen in the afternoon until two forty-five. There will be no cost to the student's family. Eligible families are defined as those who live in the Tocco School District and have children who will be four years old by December one, two thousand and fourteen. The program is now accepting applications in preparation for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year, which will begin on Monday, September 8th, two thousand and fourteen. We, uh, the district anticipates that the funding awarded this program will limit their enrollment, so a lottery will be conducted beginning on February 6th, two thousand and fourteen. And again, the program begins this school year, September, two thousand and fourteen. If you need applications or any further information, you can go to the Tocco School website, www.tuccoholeschools.org, or you can call the school at three three seven six six zero zero, extension twelve twenty-four. These applications, um, must be submitted by January 31st, two thousand and fourteen. So, let me just reiterate, the lottery will be conducted on February 6th, so you'll have to have your applications in by the end of this month. That's my report so far, so now I go to my bookend, and I wisely didn't write anything down because I wanted to speak from the heart. Before I even met you, I, I think we conversed through emails, because you were gonna be working on our first campaign with Tom and Mayor Eklund. And I remember breaking the ice with you by saying, calling ourselves the Three Wisemen, and from that point on, I think the, uh, the spaceship left Cape Canaveral and, um, we've been working so well together on these last three years. You've mentioned that you've learned a lot from us, well, uh, I beg to differ. I think I've learned a lot from you these last three years. Although I like to kid you about being the junior member on the Board, uh, truly, I mean it when I say it, uh, your work in educating me and the work that you put into the budgets over the last few years is nothing short of phenomenal. I don't know where this village would be without the hard work that you put into crunching those numbers for the last three, well, the last two budgets, and now as we work on our third budget. I'm gonna miss those phone calls that we get every day. I'm gonna miss your emails, but I know you have to do what's best for yourself. And, um, it's gonna be tough to fill that spot down at the end of this table. And I, you're gonna be missed, and don't let the generation gap fool you. So, thank you, Jeanette, um, for everything that you've done, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Um, we're all gonna miss you, Jeanette, very much, so. Uh, that's gonna bring us to the second opportunity to address the Board, if anybody would like to come on up and say anything at all. And, uh, if we have nothing else tonight, uh, if we have no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Do I have a second to that? Till next time, Tocco, have a very good evening.